Up when you're, when we're ready. Okay, thank you. Hi, it's Wednesday, March 17th. At 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board meeting to order. I'm Holly Darlo Babcock. I act as chair. To my left is Tom Solon, our assistant chair. Kate Stoll is a board member. We have Rick Barnes. He's our principal of the high school. Beth Williams is a board member. Did I say board chair? I might have said board member. I don't know. Okay, and then ladies, you're gonna have to refresh. I know one is Annie.
I'm Sam.
Sam. Oh, I think I met you a long time ago. Okay, Sam. So Annie and Sam are here. They are student council reps. We have Krista Whalen as a board member. Bob Thompson, Assistant Superintendent. Gina Burksog, Assistant Superintendent. Andy Corey, Superintendent. Welcome, everyone. At this point, I'm going to appoint a process observer. Who would like to do that? Tom Solon will do our process observing. We do have some agenda adjustments. Could you, Mr. Corey, do you have?
Yeah, I had emailed out to the board. We inadvertently left off the approval of minutes. So we'll go through those. Those are in the agenda guide. And that's it, to my knowledge, for adjustments.
Great, is there any comment on that? Anybody have a problem with that? Okay, so we'll move forward with those. So we'll be adding the minutes, approval of the minutes, as our first item before, I think before public input, after nominations and resignations, but before public input, right?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, no, actually, yeah, that's how we're gonna do it. So we'll do.
Bob, can you help?
I don't wanna help her now.
Okay, so nominations, resignations, and correspondence.
The only piece of correspondence I have, I just wanted to publicly recognize Kerry Marsh and Bob Thompson. Next Tuesday and Wednesday, Hollis Brookline will be hosting a vaccination clinic for all staff members across RSAU, as well as the staff members from Amherst and Mount Vernon, and the Milford School District. There'll also be members from ARSEC, which is the Regional Special Health Collaborative, coming over. Some people that are educators for Beaverbrook will be involved, and some other folks that have fallen into the category of two A's. About four or five weeks ago, we started with the hope of hosting our own clinic. It's taken an awful lot of work, a lot of time and hours, and we expect to process somewhere around 1,000 people next Tuesday and Wednesday. We will be in school, so teachers will be working closely with each other. We have a group of volunteers coming in to help provide coverage. It's scheduled to be a wonderful day, so we're gonna get kids outside and take advantage of that wonderful weather. And then on April 13th and 14th, we'll repeat the process for our second dose, and then everybody will be vaccinated that wishes to have one. So we're really excited about this, and I just wanted to recognize Kerry and Bob for the number of hours. And by them taking over this, it allows Gina and I to focus on the day-to-day operations and keep everything moving forward. I also want to make the board aware that basically every student who has requested to be in-person across the SAU is in-person. So we have nobody on a waiting list. Everybody has returned back. On Monday, we returned about 70 more students, so we're probably close to a ratio of 90% face-to-face and 10% fully remote. And I believe we'll get more calls as things get better. And it's also our intent, after the vaccines are concluded, to begin the recall of staff and working with them to get them back into their classrooms. And they're very excited about that. We're meeting with the union tomorrow and opening up discussion around that.
Andy, how much of the staff is in-person?
I think it's, I think at the co-op level, I wanna say it's nine in a fully remote now.
I don't know. Some have gone in and out.
Yeah.
And then we have some weaves, so it's kinda hard to keep track as not the HR person of who are on weave versus.
So I'll have to get that number for now.
I was just wondering if there's a lot of instruction taking place in school via remote teaching?
There are definitely that happening for certain staff members. To say a lot, I'm not sure if it's a lot.
I mean, unless it's something like a maternity leave or something like that, if a staff member's out for specific reasons, they're teaching remotely via Zoom to the classroom, the in-person classroom, as well as their Zoom students.
So is it, is a, would you take a rough guess at what the percentage of staff that's teaching remotely?
So there's 64 staff. There's probably, and this is just a rough estimate, I'm gonna say four or five, I think, that might be actually teaching remotely. Does that sound right?
I think, I think there's more than that. And then I would say there's
At the high school?
An equal number at the middle school right now as well. But it's a much higher percent because of the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. That's a really big deal. That's a really big deal.
Yeah, that's what I wanna make sure the public understands. What a huge undertaking, and we so appreciate it, and I hope our teachers appreciate it as well. That's awesome. Thank you so much for your hard work. Okay, so at this point, we'll move on to approving of the minutes. So first, I need a motion to take from the table the meeting minutes of the non-public sessions conducted on January 20th, 2021.
So.
Moved by Tom.
Second.
Seconded by Beth. All in favor? To take it off the table?
Yes.
Oh, so you're in favor of taking it off the table?
Yes.
Okay, so it's 5-0. Are you?
I have a quick question about it. I will abstain. I could not find these. I reviewed, I read all the other ones, cuz it was quite a lengthy list.
Right.
I could not find them, so it might be totally user error, but I'll just abstain from this.
Okay, that's fine, cuz you can read them.
If somebody else can see them and forward them
Okay, I saw them, so.
My way, that would be awesome.
For what it's worth, the way I get them is I go into Dawn's outline, and she has the links in all, in her outline.
Yeah, I definitely see them.
I didn't know where to look for.
Sure, no, I didn't know. That's, that's a great point. Thank you. I just somehow missed those two, so.
That's fine, so you'll abstain, that's fine. So for the first non-public, I need a motion to accept as presented.
What's the date?
January 20th, 2021. Moved by Tom.
Second.
Seconded by Kate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Okay, so that's 4-0-1. And then we have the second non-public of January 20th, 21st, 2021. I need a motion to accept as presented. It's moved by Tom.
Second.
By Kate, great. All in favor? And we've got four. Abstentions, 0-1, great, thank you. We also have the Cooperative School Board and Budget Committee minutes from February 2nd, 2021. And I need a motion to accept as presented. Moved by Tom.
Second.
Seconded by Beth. Any more amendments or anything? Okay, all in favor? 5-0-0. We need the minutes from February 10th, 2021, of the Hollis Cooperative School Board with the following amendments. Page 11, line 39, and page 12, line 6, correct the spelling of Vice Chairman Solon's name. Page 18, line 38, replace lots with lost. Page 15, line 22, delete cap. Quotes, C-A-P, cap. So I need a motion to accept as amended for the February 10th, 2021.
This isn't the hearing, Andy. This is for more minutes.
No, the public hearing is next.
The public hearing's next, okay, yes.
You need a motion?
I need a motion.
So.
Second.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth, okay. All those in favor? 5-0. Okay, now we have the public hearing from February 10th, the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board Public Hearing, February 10th, 2021. The following amendments, there's quite a few, were offered. Page 2, line 14, replace the comma with a period. Page 3, line 3, replace move, the word move, with moved, past tense. Page 6, line 9, delete period he. Page 9, line 44, replace show with shown. Page 10, line 2, replace HB214 with HB1214. Page 12, line 38, replace gong with going. Page 12, line 33, delete the the before Mrs. St. John. Page 14, line 16, replace provide with provided. Page 14, line 32, correct the spelling of idea. Page 14, line 33, correct the spelling of is. Page 14, line 45, correct the spelling of to. Page 14, line 47, replace zooming with zoning. Page 15, line 25, delete to. Page 15, line 36, replace no with on. Page 15, line 38, replace the double As with A-O-A. And I'm sorry, my printer cut this off, so I have to look at here. Yeah, now I need to put those glasses on. Page 18, line 35, replace or with of, and page 23, line 34, correct the spelling of what? I need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Tom, seconded by Beth. Are there any other additional? Yeah.
I have a question for the board to see if anyone else agrees with me. There is a section describing presentation by Mr. Powers. I believe it was the one regarding, regarding the petition warrant article to reduce the number of grades in the co-op, where it's, a data point that he lists is described as cost per pupil capitalized, like the proper thing and the variation. And I think it's misleading to call it that without clarification, like saying Mr. Powers' calculation of, or something, and have it be a non-formal, because that number is not the number that is reported by the Department of Education for us, and it's not calculated the same way.
So just, Tom, was that on the petition warrant article that would divide the schools?
Yes.
The seventh and eighth grade? So can I just scroll down to that one? I think that's the third.
I think so, if you don't mind me.
No, I don't mind you. Is it three? Yeah, no, that's, yeah.
It was three.
Yeah, it's three, okay. Yep, so here's his comments.
And that's on both nights of the public hearing, so I did read that too. I'm glad you brought that up, Tom.
The other one is in our hearings, like you.
No, I know, I mean, we did the two nights though.
We did two nights of it, so it actually is. We did 11th. Keep going.
It's in the original presentation?
This seems to be the minutes. You gotta do.
Unfortunately, I don't.
Who was article two?
I don't know, so would you think it was in, was it comments on the budget? No, cuz this was just.
Was it on the presentation?
It was during his presentation. It was the notes taken of what he explained in his presentation.
So is the, do the minutes not reflect the presentation?
It, it, the minutes are essentially a paraphrasing.
Right, I understand that. I know what they are, but yeah.
He gives a number, and it's referred to as cost per pupil capitalized with the, with the same designation that if someone were to go to the DOE, you would find that exact same representation.
Okay, let's see.
May I ask a question?
I'm trying to find it.
Because I, that actually, when I read the minutes today, when I read the minutes today, that was something that caught my attention too. But I struggle with that because it's, it's what he said, and there's a lot of things, you know, people can come to the podium and say anything they want, and it may not always be, there's a lot of instances of that, and it's not because people are trying to be deceived.
No, I'm just, I'm just.
Misunderstand the number.
On the, first of all, capitalizing it.
Capitalizing, okay.
And the bracketed, the bracketed abbreviation, which is essentially a recognized acronym
Sure.
of the official number.
Sure, I, I understand that. I guess I appreciate that, but at the same time, at the end of the day, he still said cost per pupil.
Oh, here we go. It's actually, it's on petition warrant article one.
I'm not objecting to saying cost per pupil.
It's just how it's capitalized.
So here's the paraphrase. A graph was displayed, this is related to petition warrant article one, which is where he's looking for, the petition warrant article, excuse me, is looking for a tax cap. And as a, one of the just. So this is page two, line 12. It says, "A graph was displayed depicting this cost per pupil in parentheses, CPP, which is basically the operating budget in all warrant articles divided by the number of students in a particular year. This district was down around 11.3 in 2005," and then he goes on to say roughly 8.2 in FY 18 and 19.
So what I would propose amending it to say is, "A graph was depict, displayed depicting his calculated cost per pupil," not capitalized.
Okay, so, so you would like to amend line 12 to include the words after the word depicting, his calculated cost per pupil, take the the out. So his calculated cost per pupil, and you, we'd like them to, we would make CP and P lowercase.
Correct.
That's the amendment you're suggesting.
And eliminate the parenthetic.
And eliminate the parenthetic. Okay, does anyone have an issue with that? No. So do we think we captured that amendment? Should I read it again?
I think you did.
Okay.
If Dawn has any concerns, she can reach out to me, and I can reiterate it to her. I won't make any further.
So you're adding an amendment to our already amended, so we can just vote on this as is?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so all those in favor with the amendments? 5-0, great, thank you. Thank you for capturing that. And then we also had the same public hearing the following night, and so do I need to look and see if she did it the same way?
As a technical, I didn't pick up on it.
Minutes, public hearing, 2-0.
Is that?
Petition warrant.
Page, line 12.
Is it, this, we didn't approve this yet. This is, this is what's next, is February 11th, so. Did he touch on cost per pupil again? Cost per pupil has gone up from, so again, here you can read it. It's written a little differently than it was. It's right here, line 42.
I'm fine with it, the way.
It is there, okay, cuz that's more like a paraphrase. It doesn't seem as, I understand, okay. So for those, I need a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. All in favor? 5-0. And then we have the final minutes from February 17th, 2021, of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board, and I need a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. All in favor? 5-0-0, okay. Okay, so at this point, I'd like to open the floor for public input. Seeing none, I'm going to close the floor for public input. Perfect, at 6:18 PM.
Can I ask a quick question about public input?
Sure.
The questions come up a couple of times, and I apologize for not bringing it up before. Public input, sometimes when we're introducing public input, we use the language that comments have to be with, you know, within what's on our agenda. But that's come, it's been questioned a few times for me, and I looked at the policy, and it doesn't say that it has to be on our agenda. It says, it does have a lot of very good explanations, but I just wanted to maybe encourage us all to take a look at it.
Okay.
Cuz it's a little different. And Hollis took it a step further, just saying it has to be relevant to our district policies, procedures, operations, but it's not just limited. So if somebody, I've heard both positive and negative feedbacks, saying, "Well, I wanted to come and share this great thing," or "I wanted to speak about this cuz I'm concerned about it," but when they've heard that language, that it has to be on the agenda, they just stop and won't speak. So if we can take a peek at that.
Okay, we can look at it in policy.
And we can circle back. Thank you so much.
No problem. Okay, awesome. Principal and athletic reports, that would be you, Mr. Barnes.
Yes. Happy to be back after hiatus. I'll start with Principal Gerson's report from the middle school. Congratulations to 8th grader Lloyd Feng for placing 10th at the Math Counts Chapter Qualifier, and he's competing at the chapter invitational, and is, and for competing at the chapter invitational held on February 25th. Reminder that the New Hampshire SAS, the science, or the SAS assessments will be administered here at the middle school, and they are mandatory, and students remote and in-person are expected to take part in the computer-based assessments here at HBMS in-person, once those dates are assigned in the spring. Also, 6th and 7th grade course registrations coming up for the 21-22 school year, as well as the 6th grade transition to middle school activities will begin in the coming weeks. Parents will be sent directions on how to register for their child's next-year classes, and the HBMS administration will be hosting an evening presentation via Zoom for parents of current 6th graders. Onto athletics, which is all high school, as it happens. The HBHS athletics program had a phenomenal winter season, one of the better ones in recent memory. We had five teams finishing as runners-up. Girls swimming, boys ski, wrestling, bowling, and last weekend, boys hockey went as far, made it to the runners-up place in a kind of a heartbreaking loss to Berlin, which was a first for the program to make it that far, so really excited for them. And the swimming season had a phenomenal, swimming team had a phenomenal season as well. They had four freshmen that broke school records, so a very strong swim season for the team, and Coach Willett, and more success with skiing, with Justin Colby earning a state championship honors in the solemn race of the Division II Boys Alpine Ski Meet, and the boys ski team to a state runner-up finish. Recent coaching hires, they've had the girls outdoor track assistant, Coach Patera, and HB, the softball assistant coach, Joanne Sgay, and you can see there's a number of district openings posted, and we're always looking for good coaches, and encourage anyone with interest to apply. Before I dive into my report, I'd like to turn it over to Sam and Annie for the student report.
Yeah, so recently, student council's main focus has been our annual Spirit Week. This year, it took a lot more planning than usual because of COVID, obviously. We had to put together as much of Spirit Week as we could while making it fun and safe. So Spirit Week is actually this week because our previous week that we scheduled got snowed out, so we moved it to this week. And we tried to keep the same activities that we have done in previous years. So for penny wars, where we would usually collect coins as a fundraiser, we opened up donations to My School Bucks, and that way, students and families were able to donate to our organization of choice, which was End 68, which we usually pick, which is an organization that aims to end hunger amongst schoolchildren. And this actually helped us raise more money than in previous years, because people didn't just donate coins, and it eliminated the need to exchange physical money. So the My School Bucks might stick around. And in a, in new addition to our Spirit Week, we had each class adopt a local business that had been affected by the pandemic, and each council encouraged their classmates to take out, to get takeout meals from those businesses. So we thought that was a really great way to incorporate Spirit Week into the community. And then we kept our skit and dance that we usually do each year, that classes make and perform at the end of the week. But since we can't have an assembly, we had everything filmed, and they'll be shared to teachers who will show them to students. And then we had dress-up days, and we made posters relating to each class's theme. So, so far, it's been a really good week. And then lastly, this is Sam, and she is gonna join Jess and I at the next few meetings because she will be taking over for us next year.
Thank you very much. That's a great report. I'm so glad you managed to get all those spirit things in. I think it's a lot of fun.
And the students have done a wonderful job. We've had several discussions, I think. I've said no a lot to things early on, which paint, which was kind of very, not what I wanted to do, but they just kept coming back, as you can see, with great ideas and really creative ideas. And I think the My School Bucks is here to stay. They've raised a record amount of money with that, so that was really great to see, and it does feel like Spirit Week in the school, which was pretty amazing, given all the things that we're facing. So we're really appreciative of their efforts and their spirit and their drive. Excuse me. Just wanted to quickly recognize, you see the board report, the New Hampshire Music Awards All-State Festival. We have several students recognized there, as well as Jazz All-State Honors. This program is rigorous, as you know, and even more so given the whole thing had to be done over Zoom, so pretty proud of these students who overcame all the challenges that go into auditioning, especially with something like Zoom, so it's, kudos to them. Also, we received another, more acknowledgement for our Computer Science Program with the National Center for Women in Technology Award for Aspirations in Computing, computing, excuse me, with Ashli Shabogane and Alexandra Hill, receiving the award for New Hampshire. And the war, the, the NCWIT is a nonprofit community that convenes, equips, and unites change leader organizations to increase the influential and meaningful participation of girls and women at the intersection of race, ethnicity, class, age, gender, identity, sexual orientation, disability status, and other historically marginalized identities in the field of computing, particularly in terms of innovation development. So again, really proud of those two for their, for their work. As you know, we have the school day SAT coming up, and it aligns perfectly with the day, one of the days that we're getting vac, we're gonna be offering vaccinations at the high school. So the day is being, was already scheduled for two days. We did make that decision to hold it over two days. We met today, and we have a plan in place that we're pretty confident with, that it won't be as much disruption, we'll be able to do both. So we're pretty confident, and pleased that we can do that, and it is really a celebration of the fact that we're all gonna be able to be vaccinated, so we're pretty happy with that. AP exam windows from the 3rd to the 17th. The test formats paper and pencil, because that tends to work better. And so that'll be in-person at the high school, and there'll be more dates, more information on that. Prom is Friday, May 21, May 21st, Beaverbrook. The kids have done a great job at planning that. They've started that probably in August. And graduation, right now, we are tentatively scheduled for the 12th, and we are gonna be on the lacrosse field. That's a certain, and that's with, I would imagine, we're staying with Saturday if we're gonna be on the lacrosse field, so that sounds, unless the school board's extending it, the 12th it is. We've already heard about Spirit, Spirit Week. And one quick thing that's not in the report that I want to mention, in meeting with the leadership team, we've decided to follow the path that we set forward with midterms with COVID and not do finals for this year, for the same reasons that we didn't do midterms with the inequity that it presents, given the current format, and we have a number of students, as Superintendent Corey's pointed out, that are coming back and who have not been in school for a year. We feel that they would be better served with more seat time that they've been missing in time of direct instruction as opposed to prepping for a test. So last but never least is our friend from the accreditation body, Niask.
Before you jump to that.
Yep.
Are you still considering the Friday night graduation, or have you ruled that out now?
As I was reading this, and when I was writing it, and I had a conversation with Superintendent Corey, I would not consider that now, because we're doing it on the lacrosse field, and there's no lights. So originally, the Friday night was if we were gonna do it on the turf field, and we, there's just some unknowns, and we need to like make a decision and just go forward. So I could see it, it would be a great Friday night venue, there's no doubt about that, and we would have loved to have done it, but we just have to plan and move forward, so.
So it's basically going to be where we've always had it?
Same place we had it, and then we're just looking at what the variables might be this year and tweaking it. We think we're gonna be able to do more than we did last year. So I can't see any reason why that's not gonna be the case at this point. So we have some ideas. We met with the graduation committee and are looking at different things, basically expanding what we did last time with the possibility of more people, more guests, maybe not as many as we've had in the past, but more than we had last time. And, you know, having students be able to walk across stage and that, and those types of things. I don't see why we can't do those things in the current environments, but especially where vaccinations are only increasing, so, and the numbers are trending down, so those are all great things. And I think the other day, we had, the first time at the high school, since the second day of school, we had zero reports of symptoms on the symptom monitoring report. So obviously, things are trending in the right direction, which is just knocking on wood huge, but that had not happened for a very long time. So that's, we're pretty happy with that, very pleased with that. So the, the letter in your report dated for the 31st, that came as we were in the midst of our planning and ramping up over the summer for planning to open the school year. This report kind of fell at an odd time, cuz if you remember, we submitted the report, and then the pandemic hit, and then we got the response back as we were planning for the next year. So in there, I'll just hit a couple of the highlights and address some of the concerns. The commission was pleased to learn of the K-12 content area curriculum coordinated by the Assistant Superintendent and the PD. by the Assistant Superintendent, and the PD days to support this work, and the PD days that have been provided by the SAU have been phenomenal. I mean, it's, we, those days are so, so valuable, and teachers and staff and administration are very appreciative of that. Moving more courses to a heterogeneous grouping such as civics and economics, which we've talked in these meetings about several times. Upgrades to the wireless infrastructure, which has been fantastic, and the growth of our Extended Learning Opportunity Program, which grows every year. They referenced concern about the 44% of recommendations that have been classified as in progress planned for the future or no action. Knowing the tone of that paragraph, I reached out to the person who is now an Associate Director of Niask, who actually led our site visit and had a really good productive conversation with him. True to HB fashion, I explained to him, we didn't just jump in and start creating rubrics to address the various items. We actually, in some ways, went a couple of steps back before we went forward through the Instructional Practices Committee because we felt we could not address some of these things until we really addressed some of these foundational issues that we've been working on for a long time. And we've obviously spoken about that committee's work at great length here, and it's not done yet. There are some things to finish. I also explained to him the impact of the pandemic and how we are one of the only schools or few schools that are hitting five days a week, and the amount of time and effort that takes. And as a former school principal, he certainly understood that. And everybody, actually, that I explained that to, their first reaction is kind of one of shock, like, you're really doing that? Nobody's doing that. Like, yes, we are doing it, and we're doing a pretty good job of it, too. So, and he certainly understood that. Within all those items, and they had requested a special report due for June 1st, he immediately extended it to September 15th for, so the three-month extensions for us to provide an update on progress. And we had a lot of conversations about, you know, we might have one standard at HB, but we probably already meeting some of the standards, so we might be holding ourselves to a higher standard. And so we kind of are kind of dinging ourselves a little bit in some of these items, which is another way of looking at it in a way I hadn't really thought about it until that at that point. So I think we can go back through that report and find some, probably many items that we can mark as complete. The big crux of their concern is the same as it was, is they specifically mentioned it, and they pulled it out on purpose. He explained to me on the second page about the advisory. They don't call it an advisory because they know the connotations of that, but they're talking about a formal program and to connect and make sure that each student has an adult in the school beyond the school counselor. So that's advisory, and that's going to be a big piece of what the expectation is. We do have a pilot, or excuse me, we have been planning for a pilot through a committee in the building that's been gathering resources. That group's work has been on hold a little bit because there's been some questions about whether we're going to actually have an advisory. There's also a lot of work going on running school. But I would recommend, and I'm speaking with Assistant Superintendent Berg Scott, there could be monies, potentially stipends available to incent teachers to run and become advisors, to do a pilot for next year, for 2021, with an eye on full-scale implementation of '22, '23. There just needs to be some more time. We're in the midst of trying to run school. We have some, a new schedule that we've run this year. We know that we'll likely be back at the same schedule next year. There's a lot of different pieces to that. And when I explained to the Associate Director, there's also a transition in leadership in the building, too. There's a lot of input that's going to be needed there, and there's going to be a lot of moving pieces that seem to be taken well. But that advisory piece is not something that's going to go away. We've talked about that here. I talked about it with a group of students that I've been meeting with as part of some of the DEI questions and concerns, and we had a good conversation about the need to, separate from some of the concerns, just connecting, you know, reconnecting with staff in the building and students. And some staff are amazing at it, and some staff, it's not an area of strength. And so in terms of what they were trained to do, and there would be, need to be a lot of training, but that's, that's going to be the most critical piece in all this. If that gets hit, then I think the rest of it is going to work out pretty well. There's more work to do, but that's the biggest chunk of it from their point of view. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
No, good job. This is actually a good report from the ask. I usually find a lot more things wrong, so.
That's another positive way of looking at it. It's true. For us, this is actually a good report compared to past reports.
It looks good, and we've certainly been taking steps to address some sort of an advisory. We are looking at it. We've been looking at it. I think it's, you know, something that we know would be helpful, but I think members of this board have expressed concerns with some of it, too, and the way it's done and how it's done. And so it'd be interesting to see what a pilot program kind of produces for us and what would work. Did you have a comment, Gina?
I was just going to say, you know, at HB, we don't just do something because we're told to do it. If we put something in place, we want to do it right. And to put advisory program in place and to do it right is not something you just jump into, and you have to have support of the whole community. And so, you know, go slow to go fast. So it's definitely on the horizon, and we're going to do it right.
I'm all for taking small steps and taking our time and figuring it out and piloting something and seeing what works. And have you had some sense from students that they would, they feel like this would be something? Because in the past, our feedback from our students, at least, I mean, I haven't, I wasn't around when this was really a big topic of conversation a few years ago, but it didn't sound like it was something that our students really were looking for. But now, you're sensing that they would like it.
Given the effects of the things that we've seen from the pandemic, not just to blame it all on that, but given all those impacts, I'm seeing more of an appetite for it now than I ever have before. So I do think it's there.
Okay, great. Is there anybody else? Great.
Holly, I have.
What?
Yes, Beth. But not specific to the report, just in general, I just wanted to say thank you, obviously, to both our principals for the reports. And I want to say something to the students' report, too. I'm just really, really impressed with everything you guys have been able to kind of coordinate and pull through this year. And I know from just being on the school board and being on the advisory committee with Dr. Corey and how hard it is to think outside the box and to make so many changes, but still make something, you know, a fun and great experience. And I, you know, I've seen it this week. I've seen the pajama days, and I've seen the wizard day today. I mean, it's really still, and even with the skits, like, the skits is such an important part of the Spirit Week, and it's really neat to see what they've been able to accomplish. So I just wanted to say thank you so much. I'm really excited that you guys have been able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's so very true, Beth, to piggyback on what you've said. This success of us having kids in school is because we have the students we have and who've done a great job in being flexible and understanding. And it has been a really hard year, and the board, and when you go back to council, you can let them know that this board has compassion for what you've gone through and, you know, knows that this has been an incredibly challenging year for you, so.
It's a cooperative district.
It is a cooperative district, and they are cooperative kids.
And just a couple more comments on the students, just because I think we don't have the HB comments at the end, so I just wanted to say.
Oh, did we forget?
I think we might have forgotten, and we already did our agenda.
It's on the outline, but it's.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's on the outline, but it's not on the agenda. So I'll just throw this out there. Just again, thank you to the athletics for the report, too. And that really was an incredible season. I watched so many of those games, especially basketball and hockey, but really, all of any games that I could catch, I definitely caught, and they were wonderful. And last thing, not, that hasn't been covered in any of the reports, I just wanted to mention that Hollis Brookline High School does have a full-length musical that will be coming out the last weekend in March and the first weekend of April. It'll be available streaming. It is on the website, but it's a little hard to find right now. Right now, it's just under News Links, under the Hollis Brookline High School, but they're working to get it better on the calendar and everything so people can get tickets. The board members should have gotten an email specifically today about that. But just to mention, I mean, I know as of a couple of days ago, when I got to stop by and see them working on it and piecing things together, I mean, this is a full-length musical. It's the only one that we know, the only high school we know of in Southern New Hampshire that's actually been able to do something this big this year. And I know a few days ago, they said over 1,500 hours have been logged by students.
That's amazing.
You know, students are filming around the community in their homes or in businesses that will allow private, safe video, you know, and recording for the musical. It's just really, really awesome. And I think they bumped the hours up in the email today. I think it said 1,700 hours. So they really, like, in the last week, it's like 200 more hours. I mean, it's really, really awesome. So if you get a chance, I highly recommend that will be available online in a couple weeks. Thank you.
Yes, Tom.
Is anything already in progress regarding the advisory discussion? Is there, is there a mechanism that's been identified to generate ideas and move towards it?
Well, I think the first piece is, the grant has been written and approved, so there is funding lined up. And then the tough work is what Rick has been doing, so you can check.
So that work, that committee was formed maybe a few months ago, but it was more of a task working group to look at resources that already exist and start to gather those resources, and then work with teachers that volunteered and demonstrate interest in potentially running a pilot. So the good news is, this has been going on in schools for like a long time. And so there's a lot of items and things to pull from out there. It's just a matter of making it fit for us and within our constraints that we have, and scheduling all those things that go into it. So yes, the mechanism exists. They have not been meeting as of late. Like I said, there was a bit of a pause for a couple of reasons, but there, you know, we could easily restart that or get it going. So with an eye on starting next year, we initially wanted to do it this year, but people just got, kind of hit a wall in terms of what they're maxed out. But the interest is there, and I do think the stipends, you would have a decent pilot to run an advisory, and I do think you would have kids volunteer to be a part of that, too, based on the feedback I've been getting from students.
The two areas I would like to hear about specifically is how the students are participating in the process so that we put a process in that's going to be utilized and accepted and that the students become stakeholders rather than victims of it.
Sure.
And the second part of it would be identifying what is set out as metrics to determine impact of the work so that if we are doing it, we at least have something that we're looking at to assess the performance of it.
Agreed, yeah. And I don't believe, the group's small now, but I don't think it includes students, so that's a good point. That's something that's easy to do. And the metrics exist, too, surveys and those types of things. So they're all things that are very attainable.
But this is what, I understand that there's a push for this type of service. What hasn't been articulated is what's the intended benefit, other than the overall thing? It's good for students, but specifically, I don't really understand what it's attempting to target and how you determine whether or not it's effective. So that would be very helpful to me.
Okay. Yeah, I think just the easy answer that is broad, but it is, it's making sure that students feel like they connect with at least one adult. And I think that's the easiest way to define it. And, you know, the kids I've spoken to, do you feel like you have a connection with an adult? Some will say, yes, I do, and some will say, no, I don't. Or I know, I have several friends who don't have a connection.
And you have baseline data on that now?
Mine's only anecdotal, in terms of students I've spoken to. Yeah, so there's no survey, nothing formal like that. It's just more.
Conceptually, it's so that every student feels known in the building.
Right.
It feels like they have a presence in the building. And so if you have that one connection, and then when a student feels known, they're less likely to get lost, whether it's academically or emotionally or physically, no kidding. Like, you know, they're less likely to get lost. And so the idea is that you'll capture and pick up those kids that might not seek help, that the guidance counselor might not seek help, but are kind of going through the motions. It's the, I think that's the concept, and certainly, we've had public input on it and have heard the benefits of it. I think that's the ultimate goal of it. However, is advisory the only way to get there? That's the question.
Right. And that's why they specifically don't, they don't write advisory in the letter. I mean, they put all the language of it, but they don't actually use that word.
Right. What's the way to do that?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Rick? Thank you very much. Council reps, Annie and Sam, you don't have to stay for the entire meeting. It's really up to you. So, and at this point, you are excused to go whenever you feel like you need to.
Thank you.
When they say that to me, I get up and run. Don't feel bad at all.
Beth, however, you have to stay. So certification of Articles of Agreement, who's the point person on this?
I can take that one.
Is that you? Thank goodness.
I believe it was our last meeting, maybe the meeting before, I had brought forth from our attorney, the Articles of Agreement. And there were some questions from some of the board members regarding the documentation and certification. So I reached back out to Jim O'Shaughnessy, our attorney, and he came back, and he completed work to certify, to the best of his ability, the Article of Agreement. What he did is, he worked with the Cooperative District Clerk, Diane Levitt, and Diane, in the board packet, provided us with a letter labeling A to E, all the different dates that things have changed and what's happened. And then what they did is they provided all the backup material with their suggestion of being to post this more as a packet on the SAU website so that everybody would understand, maybe that's near the community, how the co-op started and how it evolved to these Articles of Agreement. What he is recommending for the board is just to take a vote to, A, that they agree with this certification completed by the district clerk, and that B, that same motion that they want those to be posted on the website for public consumption. And I'll gladly take any questions you may have on that documentation.
That sounds good. I don't think we have any questions. Are we going to have any, are we going to have anyone who's going to struggle with the vote on that?
Anything now?
The vote on it?
Yes.
Now? You want to move from discussion to deliberation?
Like back and forth? That sounds awesome.
Sure. But I think, though, the motion in here is to accept, but we should have it be accept and post, right?
Yep.
So motion to accept and post the Articles of Agreement as certified by the clerk.
Second.
By Tom, second by Beth. With no discussion, I don't think. All in favor? And we've got 5-0-0. Okay.
Good idea, Tom.
Great. Next is the, um, thank you. Andy? I'm just using first names now. I'm done with this. It's April. No, it's March, but it's almost April. Gina?
Yes.
HBMS Principal Search Committee update, is that you?
That is me.
Exactly.
Okay, so as you are aware, we posted the position for principal of the middle school a couple of months ago. We collected some applications. The pool was decent for an administrator position. A subcommittee of the interview committee completed prescreening, speed-round interviews. We offered all applicants who completed the packet, a 10-minute interview. And we then brought in some candidates to the overall committee, where we met to review those applicants. We discussed goals for who and what we were looking for in a principal. We selected questions, and we reviewed the process and the timeline. So last Thursday, we interviewed four candidates, and we named two finalists, some in alphabetical order. So we have David Sutherland, who's been an assistant principal for the past seven years at London Derry Middle School, and prior to that, he was an assistant principal in Allentown. Prior to that, he was a sixth-grade teacher and a science teacher in multiple districts, including Bedford. Another finalist we have is Patrick West. Patrick West is currently both the assistant principal and the athletic director at Hillsborough Dearing Middle School. Prior to that, he was a middle school math teacher and a LEGO Let Your Mind Go program director. So we're very excited about our two candidates. There was just about unanimous support for both of these candidates by the committee. We, these were via Zoom, so we are going to bring our two finalists to our middle school next, I was going to say next Friday, but in a couple of days. Things have been a little bit busy in our district. But anyway, on Friday, we're going to do a building tour, a half an hour with each candidate. We'll walk around the middle school, talk about what we are most excited about, most proud about, and who we are, and just to get to know them a little bit better. After that, the following Thursday, March 25th, and I'll send this information out, we're going to host a Zoom meet and greet. Well, there'll be a session for community members, a session for students, and a session for faculty to just ask questions with our candidates, and then we'll be able to accept feedback from that. And then we'll have an SAU leadership team interview with Andy, Kelly, Bob, Amy, and myself with the final two candidates. And then we will bring one candidate to our board meeting on April 14th. So that is. So that is our timeline. We're really excited. Yeah.
When's the meet and greet?
The meet and greet is March 25th, but I'll be sure to send that out.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Good work. That was quick.
Who's on the current selection committee?
Sure. So on our committee, we have myself. We have Yolanda Flamino, current assistant principal here. We have Kate Stoll, board member. We have Lydia Atchison, community member. We have Officer Bergeron, just to ask some tough questions, you know? Make him feel a little hot seat. We have Jessica Minat, French teacher here. We have Christine Turcot, school counselor. This year, she's with the eighth graders. Next year, she'll be with seventh grade. And we have Jake Richard, an eighth grade math teacher. Oh, and we have Joanne Lake, principal secretary.
Great. Gina, sounds very thorough. Excellent. Okay. Policy committee update, I think this is me. I just wanted to bring to the board something that the policy committee has been throwing around and talking about. We are behind on policy, period. Because of 2020 and whatever, and it's hard to get your hands around it. I guess NHSBA just sent out an update that I haven't had a chance to look at. Didn't even know it was there, to be honest with you. So thank you for alerting me to that. But there is a service at NHSBA. It's $1,500. And it, basically, they go through our manual and they pull anything that let us know, anything that we are missing completely that would be required and give us kind of a review of our manual. I was just wondering if, first of all, I haven't been on the board as long as some other members. So is this something that we've done in the past? Has there ever been any attempt to do this? Is it something you would consider? I mean, three members of the policy committee sit here. So we all thought it seemed like a good thing to do, especially given the current climate of so much kind of going on at once. So.
What is it you envision them actually doing?
I envision them, I know they don't do much, but I know that they will give us a list of exactly what we're kind of missing that were required by law. And I think they'll also let us know what we're missing in terms of like even recommended things.
Which is, what's your organization?
NHSBA.
Yeah, we have had that done in the past.
Yeah. I didn't, I have, we have, we had found it to be helpful?
If it's just to do that first pass and just identify things that in the past, they've categorized them as you gotta fix this. This we recommend. If it's that level, then yeah, I would support it.
Yeah. I think that's pretty much what they do, is just that level. It's just, it's a $1,500 investment. It's, I think I said that, but.
I think you did, but I just wanna make sure that's what.
So, and it's something I wouldn't say we'd have to do every year, but I don't think it's been done in my time as on policy committee. It certainly hasn't been done with my, on my time. So it's been a long time. And I think it would just help us kind of with April and reorg, like get a new, fresh, like, okay, here's the list. Because we've been compiling all of their policy updates and constantly looking at them, trying to figure out which ones are most pressing and which ones we have to get done. But we don't move through policy very quickly on this board. And that's okay, because we take our time with it. But I would love to have a little bit of guidance from them. So I'm not gonna make, this is just a suggestion. We would make a motion next month to do that, because it's not under deliberations. And I just wanted to hear if I was gonna get a lot of pushback or whatever. And if not, then I think next month, we'll make a motion to do that. Okay? Is that good? Can we make, to show that's on the agenda next month? Terrific. Because I'm not getting any. And we don't have the full board here. All right. And then the next topic is the, and I want to make sure the public, I'm actually gonna take my mask off here, just in case. And if there's public watching or listening. So finalize the articles of agreement potential warrant language and determine the date of a special meeting. I want to clarify with the public that the certification of the articles of agreement that just happened moments ago was the current articles of agreement and all amendments and things that have occurred prior to this moment. At period, at meetings before our time, really. To make sure that those were done and taken care of and reported and posted. We've since doing that and looking at that, we've realized that there are some things on our articles of agreement that are really no longer.
They're obsolete.
They're obsolete. Thank you for the word, Tom. And so we've had a special committee of board members looking at the articles of agreement and would like to make some changes to them. They're mostly housekeeping things, but there's some things that we really do need to change. And it was sort of thrown out there last month that we would do this as a, we thought about doing it on the current warrant, the warrant that's going in April. But it's a lot to do. And so we are discussing the potential of doing these kinds of changes at a special meeting. And I think, Tom, would you like to follow up on that? Is there something else you'd like to say to that, or?
No, only that particularly at this time, when there are other amendments being proposed from the citizens to the articles of agreement, we thought it was important to have them, starting from a clean document that represents the state of the co-op that currently exists to avoid confusion and the risk of piggybacking things that might have a cumulative effect. So what was offered by our legal support are two variations of how that warrant could be worded. And at this point, I think what we're looking for is to confirm consensus of which.
Which one of those? I don't have that.
Verify that there's still support to do this and then figure out when. And my personal preference, again, I don't, I don't view anything that we're proposing in these changes as controversial, because essentially what we're trying to do is make the document reflect the way that co-op has operated for past many years, not even short term. So my preference would be to have this prior to the district meeting where substantive changes are being proposed. But that's, that would mean it would be a relatively short meeting, just essentially a hearing on this and then, and then a vote. I don't know if that's possible.
I'm not sure we have time to get it in before April 10th. I mean, I think with everything else that's going on with vaccination clinics and things like that, I just don't see us having time to do it before April 10th. I do know that there's a PWA out there that impacts the, potentially could impact the articles of agreement, but I don't feel like it's that pressing to be done before April 10th.
Well, and then my thought, if it's not gonna be done before then, then I think for clarity, then we revert back to the question of, should we do that at the district meeting? And that's my personal opinion, but I know it's shared by at least one other member of the board.
It's not my opinion. So is there anybody else who'd like to weigh in?
I just think, I mean, I hear you, Tom, and I appreciate your timing. I just think before the meeting would be really difficult and would, I think in a weird way, make us look like we're trying to throw something at people before the meeting and kind of. It just, to me, it might look a little suspicious when that's not at all what we're doing. We're trying to be really transparent, but it would almost look like we're not.
I just need to ask a question, because I forgot, this was a sticking point. We were looking for an opinion from legal, is if we have a special meeting, does this open?
No, I think that it turns out.
Every change. So for instance, can, if we propose this, we have a hearing on this as proposed, and then have a meeting, can the article be amended to change other things on it at that vote?
I thought O'Shaughnessy's opinion stated that no, because the language had to be printed ahead of time and it was not amendable on the floor.
Yeah, that's what he told us.
Will that be true of the citizens petition warrant article as well?
Yeah, I think that's what he was actually talking about too. When we asked.
Whatever relates to the articles of agreement has to be printed in the newspaper, specific to the language of what it's going to state. And that's what can be discussed, because that's what's been posted.
So any, any votes to change the articles of agreement are pure up and down votes exclusively?
That's what he has told us, because that's the language that resides in there. Now, the question that I will go back and ask again, just to make sure, if we're holding a meeting, can a citizen submit a petition on that given day? Because to me, some of the pieces of the meeting are similar to apportionment. And we propose a formula, we put it out there. And then once the meeting starts, the meeting is controlled by the legislative body.
Right. That's, and if that is the case, that it can be, that adds to the importance of doing it simultaneously with the other articles. But if, if it's only an up and down vote, and we're sure of that, then having it as a standalone meeting does not present an exceptional risk.
Correct. Like, I did ask the question, because there was a citizen's petition for an article of agreement, could we make amendments to that? And the answer to that from our attorney was no. The only thing that was posted was that article. And that's what the vote is going to be on for the articles of agreement. If you wanted to look at a different article, you would have had to post that article separately, do the seven-day notice in the paper, post the meeting. If you want to do a number of changes to the article, you need to make clear in the paper and in all your postings exactly what you are proposing changing, and that's what can be discussed.
So I guess question, there's three questions.
Go ahead.
Which, is there support for doing? But it was voted yes before, I just think it's important. Now we've got something in front of us to actually reiterate that, reconfirm that vote. Question two is, assuming the answer is yes, which form, format? The one in chronological, I mean numerical order, the ones by importance, the favor. And then question three becomes.
So we voted to put it on the warrant, give it after attorney review, you know? And so then he came back with this, with, these are the ways that we would do it. And that, this is cumbersome. It's a lot. So that's why we're talking about whether or not to put it on this warrant or a separate warrant. So that's where we are right now. I think.
Are you, are you accepting the fact that the original vote still holds?
Well, I don't think the vote still holds. It holds that we, it holds that we're gonna put it on a warrant. It doesn't say which warrant.
That's my question.
Right. And it doesn't say which, so yes, the original vote, to me, in my opinion, holds that we're gonna do this. But it doesn't hold to say which warrant. It says we're gonna put it forward. So I personally really am gonna continue to advocate for a special meeting, because I know that we have an outdoor meeting in April. And we have 15 items on that meeting. And that is a lot. So I feel like we won't even get to this, because I think people will just table it. Like, I don't even think they'll wanna talk about it. They'll just wanna table it, because you're talking about, this could be, it could be short or it could be long. So I would like it to be a special meeting. I would like it to be after April 10th, after we get through everything else and get our, you know, district going. And that's how I would like it to be. In terms of which method, because I'm just gonna give you my opinion on everything and we'll let everything, I don't feel strongly on that. Like, I really don't. Like, I looked at both methods and I, so, really, it doesn't matter to me. For me, it's, I work chronologically, that's how I think. So I would imagine that would be the best, not, like in number order would be best for me. But I don't really care.
So you accept the motion on that, so we can have a formal discussion on which form to use?
Sure.
Okay. I would like to move to use the method that is described, was described as the editorial slash non-substantive changes to the articles of agreement. That was the first version. So you have a group that just is correcting dates. Then you have the group that eliminates things. With, with a recommendation that came in from the public, which is rather than deleting articles, leave out the numbers there and mark them as obsolete. That's the way they do it with the RSAs and stuff, so that you have a built-in track record that allows it. But the only reason I'm picking that is that's the one that Jim suggested.
Right.
So that's the motion, is to use that method.
I can second. But if you want, I'm a little confused, yeah.
Yes.
Anyone have a question about that? So this is not picking a date, it's just saying we'll choose the first method. That's the motion.
That's the motion. So then.
The first method is the chronological.
No.
It's the editorial non-substantive changes.
Do you have your agenda packet from last month, because it's in there?
Is it in there?
It's an email. He also sent it to us in email on February 2nd. Or maybe I sent it to you. Maybe he just sent it to me. I'm sorry.
It was page 15 of the packet last month. If anyone needs to see it, I can share.
Yeah, no, I think, I have it. Do you have it, Krista? Kate, did you find it?
No, the February 2nd was different.
Yeah, so I might not have it available to you. It's probably under the, you have to go to the agenda packet from last month.
From last month.
Or Kate, Tom can share.
Beth, do you have it? No, I was looking for it.
Okay, here, wait a second. I don't have it right now.
I remember reading it, but it's been a while.
So this is, this is where he does that.
Yeah, yeah, I remember seeing it.
Versus this where.
I was looking under Jackie. Gina sent the packet.
Did you find it?
Yeah, I found it now.
Just do it numerically. The mix, and it'll be easier to explain it.
Okay. Whatever he thinks is easier is fine with me.
Yeah, I, right.
Do you wanna see it, Beth?
I found it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm fine with the method that he suggested. I thought that was the numbered order, but I, it was a while ago when I read this, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a strong method.
Right. That's fine. And then we can talk more before we do this about changing the article for, like, if you eliminate an article, make it obsolete. We're not really gonna, I guess we're choosing each, which one?
I actually would like to.
It's in the motion, yeah. Okay. That's fine with me. No, there's no other, I just see Beth looking, I wanna make sure. Are you ready to vote?
I'm good, thank you.
All in favor? Okay. So five zero on that. So we are gonna use that method, the first one suggested, when we get there. And then how would we like to determine a date of a special meeting? I would like to postpone it to make sure it's after the April 10th deadline. I'd like to hear from the administration if there's anything that would work for them.
The 11th.
Can I make a suggestion?
April 15th, tax day.
Is there any benefit in doing, it sounds like you've got scheduled an April board meeting. Is there any benefit in piggybacking to that meeting?
You're talking another meeting like the annual meeting.
In structure, yes, but I think in impact, no.
I agree, but I don't know if we can set up for assuming that there's not going to be a large crowd.
Depending on what's going on, we could potentially zoom in.
Well, I'm not opposed to whatever way you decide. I just don't want to, basically, what is our constitution of the co-op, to be accused of having a meeting that wasn't, well, attended. We only did it in the library, so obviously we didn't want to.
Can we have a hearing on the same date as the meeting?
I think we could, but I think we probably need to reach out to the moderator as well. Because if we're gonna do a special, special meeting, we need the moderator.
We do?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
It's a town meeting.
Yeah, we have to.
It's the annual meeting. Is it a different date?
Okay.
It's sort of like having.
We don't need him for the hearing though, do we?
No, but, but we would, the hearing has to be within a timeframe of the meeting. So I think we should probably at least get a date from him. And if he thinks he can do it.
The hearing can't be closer than, but it can be longer out.
Okay.
I'm just trying to consolidate the number of times we go together.
Well, the only thing I would say to the board is typically in education, by April, we start to lose the focus of families.
Right.
They're starting to think about what's next on their agendas. So I just don't, if we're, if we're going to say the article. So I, I just don't, if we're, if we're going to say the articles or agreement are our constitution, I don't want to do something that gives it this notion that we did it in April, May, or June just to get it done. You know, I don't know what will be better.
We're doing it in April, May, or June because people refuse to do it earlier.
But at the same time, we've done apportionment in January. I mean, there's nothing that prevents you from doing this to open the school year when there's great enthusiasm. I don't care what the date is. I'm just trying to present the, the potential pitfalls and arguments that we'll receive.
So how about we do this? And we'll reach out to Drew. We don't have to declare a, a hearing today for April 17th. We'll reach out to Drew, I think April 7th. Is that our date? Gina, what's, is it April 15th or the 17th, our, our board meeting?
Board meeting's the 14th.
Yeah.
The 14th. Why do I think it's the 16th?
The 17th is the second scheduled district meeting.
So the thing is, we have-
Is there agreement that it's going to be a special hearing then? We haven't-
Okay. So can we just discuss that? Do we have to put a motion on the panel?
Well, that's what, that's what I wanted to ask, because we're talking about potentially pushing it out till next school year.
Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to weigh in on whether it should be a special hearing or whether we should put it on the warrant?
I don't think it's a good idea to have it on the current warrant. There's just too much going on.
Beth?
I'm fine with it being separate as well. I just want to kind of have a date set. I, I understand and appreciate what Chris is saying, like, to rush it really fast. But at the same, I don't want to walk away not knowing, like, we've got a plan for this.
Well, the problem is, I don't think we can pick a date tonight without, without having Drew. Like, that's not fair to him. He was just elected to the Hollis School District Town Moderator, which he didn't really want to be. So he's now going to be moderating our co-op meeting, the town meeting, and the Hollis School District meeting. So I can't, like, just say, oh, let's pick a date, Drew.
And that's not what I meant. I just meant tentatively, like, what are-
Well, we can, but it's not fair to him.
Right. Well, no, I, and I appreciate and respect that. I'm just saying, what would, you know, for those of us here, our administrators, to have, you know, a date or two in mind that we can approach him with. I'm not saying finalized, but I'm saying we, you know, have something. Like, let's have a plan before we approach him with this. And soon.
Are we talking indoor or outdoor? Because I don't know if we're going to-
Depends on when it is. I mean-
I mean, I'm just saying, because again, I'm going to get that question from Drew.
Right, right. Because you're going to need supervisors of the checklist. You, you can't just, you have to do, like, it's voters.
Well, if we're waiting till September, I don't know why we can't do it indoors, hopefully.
Again, it's all what date you choose. I, I guess, you know, I, I don't think all the restrictions for COVID are going to be gone this spring. I mean, if we were, you know, looking to plan for graduations and things, there are still pieces that are going to come into the strategies. And I know that'll be the first question.
I definitely think we can't do July and August. I think June is really tricky. I think May is already full of meetings, you know? I mean, I think we've got town meetings.
We have to add two more meetings.
Right, we have to add a hearing and a meeting.
No, we have to add two more meetings, one with Brookline, one with Hollis. So we've got to add those in too.
Meetings or hearings?
Meetings, because now we know that the Articles of Agreement say we have to have meetings. We are both school boards.
Well, we could meet at, when we do the SEU Governing Board. We could meet for five minutes before, with Brookline, and for five or 10 minutes with Hollis. We could check in with them on the SEU Governing Board, which is in May, so.
I think we have to do that twice.
Right, so we could do it in May and then hold a meeting in September for this.
That doesn't fulfill our obligation for this year.
We're supposed to have, yeah.
Okay. I still think we can manage that.
I think a September, the September meeting is good. The weather's decent. People are, kind of all return to whatever it is that is going to be the, their normal, you know?
Well, Andy doesn't want to do it in conjunction with the board meeting because we have to conduct it differently.
Well, we have to. I don't think we can do it in conjunction with a board meeting.
Right. No, it's not. I thought Gina was saying do it with the September meeting.
Oh, no, no. I just meant a September meeting. Like, have, hold a meeting in September is, because this summer, you're, you're missing too many folks.
Mm-hmm.
We want to have the opening of school, school meeting, hearing, and this meeting all in September.
Yeah, I think, I think it gives us more time in the summer to work on, you know, communicating it out. We could do it in September in the beginning of the school year. And then we can try to figure out a time to meet with the Hollis and Brooklines boards before, other than, before June. I mean, I can work something out with boards. We could do a Zoom meeting.
Well, I think the other thing is, I know it doesn't technically meet the Articles of Agreement, but when they were written, we never did chairs meetings. And we have chairs meetings basically every month.
Right.
Where the Brookline, the Hollis, and the co-op, along the SAU chair, discuss any issues going on, building to building, any concerns they have about kids coming and going. And those never occurred in the past. So I, I think we do more communicating between the boards. And I think the, the discussions at our SAU meeting have always, you know, focused on the SAU, but have become more open to what's going on across K to 12. And I would say that from pre-pandemic, when we did the strategic plan, we presented that K to 12. We didn't present it as anything but because when the student leaves the Hollis or Brookline School District, they're coming to the co-op. So we've done a lot of things, to me, that kind of meets the intent of that requirement.
Have you been having board chair meetings this, this year?
We've had a couple, yeah.
Have we ever had any reports from them?
I think at this point, we can try to schedule it in September. I'll reach out to Drew and find a date in September, and then we'll pick a hearing date.
Can I make a motion to schedule the, the meeting and hearing for September 25th?
Okay. Sure. Tom, Tom's motion, seconded by Beth. All in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, so, moving on, do we need to go to the calendar? I, we have, this is our second look at the calendar, right?
Yes, no changes. I mean, it's the exact same file. Nothing, I haven't touched it.
Oh, I have to go.
Has anything changed, or did you say?
No changes have been made since it was in the last packet. It's very much our standard calendar. The only funky one is the professional day, rather than being on voting day, is December 23rd. Backs up to our December break.
So December 23rd is a professional day?
Yes.
So there will be no students in school?
Correct. Yep, so three days.
Is that what we always do?
No, normally it's, like, November 9th.
Okay. Great. But since we don't have a voting day, you moved it there. Terrific. Okay, so I need a motion to accept as presented the 2021, 2022 school year calendar?
So moved.
Moved by Beth?
Second.
Seconded by Kate. Are there any discussion or comments on it?
What is the current thought process on snow days, having gone through what we've gone through this year?
Well, this year, we've, what we've done is traditional snow days. We've done traditional snow days this past year. We didn't utilize any remote days in lieu of-
None?
None.
Not yet.
Okay.
Hopefully, we're done.
So this schedule has five in it?
Correct, yes.
So all in favor? It's five zero, okay. Next is the Facilities Committee Policy, not the Fee Schedule. This is in your packet. We had this reviewed by attorneys because we were trying to make some changes that would prevent some sort of, any kind of protesting. And the attorney said, probably don't want to do that. So we have new language. So if you see, this has been, kind of, the red was what we changed and brought forward back in January. Oh, actually, I need to take this off the table. I think we have this on the table.
Yeah.
So we take it off the table, talk about it, and then, does this work? Okay. I need, I need a motion to take this off the table. Beth, seconded by Tom. All in favor? Okay. And then I'm going to need, I wanted to kind of present it first, and then we'll take a motion to, to talk about that. So if you're looking at this, the red is the changes we made that we brought forth under, like, the first two readings. And then the purple is the changes that have been made since we brought it to the attorney for review. And the two pieces that the attorney commented on is the protest piece. And then also making sure that the language is in there to make sure that we can cancel any event because the school has the right, the principal or designee has the right to cancel or reschedule school at any event. So, from a contract perspective.
You want, just for third reading?
I'd love it for third and adopt. So that's what this is, a motion to amend based on what's in your packet with, to accept as third reading and adopt. Is there anybody who'd like to make that motion?
I'm just looking to see if there's any.
I can make that motion, so we can talk about it. So moved.
Moved by Beth, seconded by Krista. So is there any comments or questions on it?
While Tom's looking, I mean, I'm on the policy committee with you. My only comment, I'm, I'm fine with the policy as it is, and, you know, legal looking at it. But just the actual fee schedule and the information that goes along with this, you know, more procedural, is still kind of in the works and being updated.
Right, this is just the policy.
Right, but I wanted to make that comment because it, you know, the policy needs to be in place so we can make sure and make those tweaks. But we have had people asking us about the procedures specifically. And I think, you know, if there's a way to make sure we're sharing those, it is a work in progress. All of our procedures are always-
Yeah, the only reason, they just didn't get in the packet. It was a total oversight to not get in the packet. And it wasn't going to email them out to the general public. So Rick sent them to us, and we will not be, even though it's under deliberations, we will not be voting on that piece because that has not been in the packet.
That wasn't my expectation. Just wanted to make sure it is, you know, available because, you know, because it wasn't in the packet yet, Tom.
So we just need to vote on the policy, and then we're going to hold the fee schedule till next month. But we at least will have the policy changed and, and updated. And then we'll have to, I'd like to talk about the fee schedule. It's under deliberation. So we'll have to, I'd like to at least make a motion to maybe read it, but not, not plan on having an adoption of it.
My, my question is about the line that says it's the express intent of the district not to create a public forum.
That was directly from the attorney.
And I thought that things like hearings and those meetings were, in fact, public forums.
I think the language that was used by the attorney is, is trying to address the whole concept of not creating. Where it comes, it would be right under-
I understand, but if you, if you're not, if you're not going to have public forums, how do you then authorize having those meetings, which are public forums?
It's a good question.
I'm going to let you guys figure this out. I'm going to take a quick break. I have to take a break. So I'll let you guys talk about it, figure it out for a second. I'm sorry.
Is anyone else concerned about that?
That's a good point.
I hear you.
Good point.
We actually advertised that we're having public forums for the editorial.
I think-
I understand the intent, I really do, but-
No, my, my thought is it probably needs to go back for those words to be changed because we do, like, when we're doing a building project. We intentionally hold as many public forums as we can and things like that. I think when I look at it through the lens of what Jim was looking at, it was probably from the intent of, it's not our goal to make something that's, what I'll say, inappropriate, for whatever reason, a public forum with protesters and picketers and things like that. But at the same time, you know, if you just think even about voting. I mean, so many feet away from voting, you're allowed to have what I'll call public forums. Because I get to hold my side, and you might be standing next to me with the opposite opinion. So because we're not able to do the fee structure tonight, maybe we should just consider holding off on both of them. Because I, I do think, I think we take that out simply, then we haven't addressed what the attorney's trying to address.
No, you can't just take that.
Right.
I agree.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I think, you know, I think that might be the best way to go. I know it puts it off another month, and I know there are some people looking to rent facilities. But at the same time, we're just barely starting to open things up because of COVID. So I'm not sure there's that great rush. And right now, for the spring, our teams will be primarily using the fields.
Well, we still have, I know it's, it's scheduled for an April board meeting, but that was, are we still going to have a regular?
We need to.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Because of a lot of things, that's, as long as that's the case, then I would support that.
We absolutely have to have the April board meeting because that's teacher renominations. So, I mean, there's, there's no way around that. We might densify gender a little, but we definitely will have to have that. What we were saying, what you wrote, Madam Chair, is that we, you understand the intent that Jim probably meant by public forums. Because we advertise public forums, it's, it's a difficulty. And since we can't really discuss the fee schedule tonight because it wasn't in the packet.
So we're going to just do the third reading?
Correct. We'll do it. We won't adopt it tonight. We'll do the third reading.
But we do have an April meeting.
And we'll send that back to Jim on the public forum.
Do you want a motion to amend?
So please amend the, yeah, motion to be third.
Amend the motion to be except for third reading only.
And seconded by Beth. All in favor of the amendment? Five zero. All in favor of the motion? Five zero, great. Thank you. All right, so we'll bring it all back. We'll probably have to strike that or change the word "public forum." And then we do have the fee schedule. At this point, do we want to work on that, or do you want to wait until next month and go through that? Rick, sorry, do you, are you prepared to talk on that?
I think it's worth having a big conversation.
Can we have a conversation about it, even though it's under deliberations, but not actually make it a deliberative item, and just discuss it and then bring it forward next month?
Sure.
It's not something we have to have readings for? Is that how we, we can just? Actually, I have a question. Is this something that needs to be voted on by the board because there's a fee schedule in it? Like, when we did the parking permits? Is that, it should be ultimately voted on by the board? Is it something that has to follow the same procedure of having, like, three readings? No, okay. So we can talk about it tonight, and then we'll work on passing it in, or approving it, I should say. We'll take a vote on approval next month. It has to go in the packet next month. Rick's provided what has been the thing that we've been working off of in policy. And is there any, has everybody gotten it? Is that the first thing? Did everyone get it today? So, go ahead, Rick. You can go through it and just let, kind of summarize.
So this one is, might hold the record for longest outstanding items that's being looked at, mostly because of the pandemic, of course. But also because it was kind of a mess. I don't think it had been touched since maybe 2008 or before. And so we went through, after several conversations, certainly at the board level and in policy, and cleaned it up quite a bit, especially making the fees consistent between the facilities and then setting them in tables so they were a lot easier to read and hopefully made more sense. And there is a lot of, it gets complicated. It's a long document, but it, I think the logic is there. It has the, the big piece, one of the highlights in bold on the front page, my favorite portion, "The building principal or designee reserves the right to cancel or reschedule events as circumstances dictate." And we talked about the need of that in case, you know, we get into a playoff game and we need our facility. That was an important item to some members of the board that we made sure was present on there, as it was, should be in policy as well.
May I ask a quick question about that? Just very specific to that, the language was changed in the policy and was a little, like, it had a little bit more of a punch, like, for any reason. I know it says "as circumstances dictate," but would we like it to just match now? And I apologize for not saying that before in policy, but now that it's in front of me and I can see it, I'm, that's one of two notes I have, is maybe, maybe make it matching.
Yeah, "The principal or designee reserves the right to cancel or reschedule events at any time for any reason."
Especially if you have-
And then it says, "In the event that the district has to cancel an event, all fees will be repaid."
Yep.
That would be my suggestion. Thank you.
We talked about breaking up the fees into three-hour increments in the case of a tournament where you're renting things out, or not a tournament actually, but multiple events, especially with the turf field that can get quite a bit of use with the lights. So that was changed or added or clarified within the fee schedule. The other pieces, a lot of the things remain the same. a lot of the things remain the same in terms of the regulations governing the use, including smoking. And I don't actually, now that I'm reading this.
Do you want to add vaping?
Yeah. I look at them like we didn't put vaping or how did we forget vaping?
I think we also changed the, we raised the per hour rate for staff members and musical equipment. Some of those weren't even in the last one.
What does that mean, the musical equipment? Does that mean you're not going to use our stuff?
Sometimes they do.
Yeah. It's like piano, things like that might be used and those are really expensive to tune.
But the place that it's put, it looks like, I thought it was relating to, on the fields. So that was.
Yeah, it's probably.
Do you want to move that to the underneath the indoor stuff?
Okay.
Or actually just pull, pull the additional fees include out as like a separate thing? Like it looks like it's under the field. Make it, just play with the margins a little bit and make it a little bit more specific. I think that's the problem.
Yeah. Do all those additional fees apply across the board?
Yes, they would apply across the board, I think.
Okay. So yeah, right now it looks like a footnote to the.
Fields.
The field.
Okay.
I could, I didn't actually like, let me have a gauge drawn and stuff.
Yeah, I don't know.
Who knows? We may have a band, an outdoor band someday.
No, Rick, I commend you and whoever else is involved. This is extremely well organized. Just makes it very easy to critique.
Go ahead.
I have a couple. I have a couple more things to add and you'll, you'll catch them as you go, but there's a bunch of little, little tiny topics, like as required by law and personnel. There's just little things we can claim.
We did talk about this in policy that it wasn't the cleanest version.
Yeah. This is hard to work with.
I'm a lot of Ls.
Yeah. It's a lot of Ls in personnel. One other, just one other, like actually meat and potatoes type comment. It's been brought up, you know, and talked about a bit, but now that I see it in front of me, we talked about under the regulations governing fees, talking, I think on very, very first page, the bottom, talking about the fees and saying category A and B on school days, no charge. And then if it's a non-school day, it's a charge. And the only, my only question now looking at it, if we can think about language or potentially tweak it is on school days, as long as it's not requiring extra personnel or extra things, that makes sense. But if it's requiring extra personnel to be here, I think that that's a fair concern. And I don't care if it's the PTSA holding a thing at the town of Brookline or Hollis or us. It doesn't matter who it is. If they're holding such a big event on a school evening or school day that requires us to bring in more custodians or more, or a police officer to help with traffic control or anything like that.
The police are charged. The police do their own charge.
That's all separate. But you know what I mean? If it's a bigger event where we're requiring more people or people on our campus, I just think that maybe there's a way to say, instead of saying no charge, that there's some kind of discretion in there for our principals or our, you know, administration to say that there will be a fee for a certain use. But I, I don't have language in my head at the moment, but that's my only concern is to capture extra charges.
There's a way to phrase that.
Isn't that, I guess my question is with the concern about the item, additional fees looking like a footnote, my thought is the intent of that would be if on school days, if there was a need, which there could be, depending on the size of the event, then these additional fees could apply.
I think that that needs to be clear in that number one. Because I think what the problem is, is that it's basically saying there's no char, there's no charge, there's no fees for these categories on school days. And so I think we need to clarify that in that first number one. But I don't know, I'm not going to try to word spin it now. I just think it needs to be clarified.
I would think that one and two, one should go away.
Right. And somehow we have to explain. And that's where you get into the question of, of, I think we might need, I think we need to make a distinction of not necessarily school days or non-school days, but when we're bringing in personnel for the, for the purpose of the group, not because the personnel is going to be there doing something else, that we're charging them for that.
I think that's a great suggestion. I mean, maybe tweak our, look at it longer. But if you take that out, we know that more often than not, that's the correlation, that's what will prompt the fee. But it doesn't have to be in there because that doesn't cover everything. But taking it out does work.
I think it should be like, maybe take category A and B, take out the whole on school days, no charge, non-school days, and just put like.
Utility personnel.
Utility personnel, equipment charges as deemed applicable by building principal. And then if you want to clarify that more, you could even just use the word extra utility or additional utility personnel and equipment charges, something.
Dedicated.
Dedicated, something like that, a word there, an adjective that describes that. And then that kind of cleans it up and gives the building principal the opportunity to charge even our booster club and our PTSA if, if they want to do it on a Sunday afternoon and there's no custodians in the building. Or if because of the number of people they're going to have, you need to bring in three extra custodians. So it gives you the opportunity to charge them. But it also is up to the building principal. Is everyone okay with that? Or they're, it should probably say, or their designee as well?
I already started at the discretion of the principal.
Okay.
I would, I would also say in accordance with the policy that you're writing.
Right.
And in accordance.
Or we could even, I think that should probably say the policy on the top. It should reference the policy on the top as well. Are there any other comments? Because we're going to bring this back to policy and make sure it's clean. And if you have something, it would be like, that was your only comment? Okay, go ahead.
What is in line with this, the, I'm speaking for myself and for members of the community from whom we've heard.
Right.
But we specifically want to have the ability and I think the plan, even if it's a municipal activity, if it, if the district is incurring a cost above and beyond what would already be involved, have in the school, but if there's an additional cost, that cost should be borne by the organization. And that includes the towns. So if a town is having an activity here and it means that extra staff or extra resources or the additional hours of staffing are involved, that cost should, should be borne by the town because the towns beat the crap out of us on budgets of the co-op. They use us as a scapegoat for everything, yet we've been very generous in their use. These costs need to be quantified and identified.
And I think we can phrase that first sentence to make that clear. I do want to say though, I do have a little bit of like, we do have some resources that the towns provide us and they don't always charge us. So we have to keep that in mind that like when we need extra, an extra spin by the turf field to check on it, it's the Hollis PD that just comes and does that. And so, you know, we do ask for some stuff from the towns as well. So that's why it's important that the language be, that it's determined by the building principal. Because it might be a very simple thing that's not really going to cost very much and because of what they're doing back and forth. But it might be like a town meeting that's going to be held during a pandemic and we want the entire gym cleaned from top to bottom the day after. We might want to charge them for that. Like there's different circumstances. So I feel like if we have it as discretion or it gives us the leeway to do that charging, but also the ability to respect the shared resources of the communities.
I just, I just want to, I just want to comment on that because like, to give you two recent examples. If we run into a difficulty with snow and we need a large bucket to come down and move a snow pile, I can call the Hollis DPW and they just come down and I've never seen a bill. Next Tuesday, we're going to have the clinic and the Hollis Police Department is going to provide the resource offices to do all the traffic for that. Typically, I don't see a bill for that either. So I know some community members want me to charge for certain things. I just want you to know, if we get into that, then I'm going to get charged for every time I make a call. And I think, I don't know if it'll all be equal in the wash. That's all I need to make you wait up.
I was also curious what was intended for the two empty columns. Is that something that we're going to need to discuss or did we just not get to it? Or are we not willing to allow the use of those for the category D and E?
Right. So I don't think we had figured that out yet, did we, Rick? I think that was, because that would be private promoters receiving a percentage of the profit and sponsored by groups. So that would basically be somebody wants a girl concert. Right. And then private motors, and we, we hadn't figured out the prices for the fields.
No. I feel like there was discussion because this is a year ago, that we were not.
Right. So we'll, we'll break that up.
We weren't even going to do it or not.
So we are going to, we will allow those things to happen, but we got to pick out the fee schedule. And last I knew, and this was probably pre-pandemic because it was when we talked about turf field, there was a, I think Andy had already initiated doing some surveys of nearby facilities and what, what the going rates were for certain turf fields. I don't know if that's something that's information.
I think we actually looked at that. So we'll share that.
I know the, our department had the rates for South Eden and I believe it was Bedford, which are the two closest turf fields and what they get for their user fields.
Is it, is it expected that the turf field will be costlier than natural fields? Or should it be keeping less because it costs less to keep it going? I mean, just in general.
What was our thinking? We didn't change, we didn't make a difference in the price?
I don't think.
Well, we didn't see, I didn't know for commercial with it. Because it, is there market value that allows it to be higher? Or do we want to make it less expensive because maintenance is easier?
I, I think there's a market value to make it higher because the way it drains and everything, it guarantees you pretty much a playing surface in all conditions. And you can have a downpour and still play on the turf because of the amount of water that can drain off. Where other fields would probably be closed on a day like that.
And then the other question I had is for the turf field, is there any likely cause for differential charge seasonal? Our early season or late season use, is that, is that, is it more competitive or less competitive?
I think the only differential would be if, if the time of day, because that would mean lights are no.
We got a separate charge.
Right. We have a charge.
I didn't know, for instance, it's just like, there's less demand, so we can be charged less, or there's more demand because they can't play.
I think everything has become year round. If you're a lacrosse player or soccer player, field hockey, basically many of those sports are just now year round. So I think a set charge for that activity is the easiest way to go.
So we'll flesh those numbers out a little bit more. And just for the public, those, that kind of charging on fields and things, all of these are for, we're not charging for organizations of Hollis and Brookline Youth or Recreation, you know, BHYSL or any of those places. We're talking about charging youth organizations and Hollis and Brookline community groups when they're fundraising.
For profit.
When they're for profit, when they're trying to like, maybe if they want to run a tournament or something and they're going to bring in people from all over, and then obviously for profit groups. So that's the, the one thing that, you know, if you're watching at home, because one of the things we said. And then speaking of the turf field, will we be locking it? What are we doing with that? Have we, we're keeping it open at this point?
We lock the gate at the bottom so you can't drive up.
Okay.
And the gates are closed. We have, I think it, because its newness is worn off, we're not seeing as many people come visit.
Right.
And then that's one of those times where you alluded to the Hollis Police Department. It makes regular runs through just to make sure that if it's being used by students, it's Hollis Brookline students.
So I was going to say, the policy doesn't say this and this doesn't, but can we put a sign up saying for Hollis Brookline use only? And we're working on that. I know Brian's working on that. Okay, good. All right. I don't think we have cameras up there yet, right?
Talked about.
No, we're working with Rick.
We're working on cameras. Okay.
We allocated the money for it, didn't we?
We, we had the money in the, in the.
The elevator.
The bond and the, it's, it's there. It's just a matter of when we finally get to what we want to put up there.
Cool.
I actually think when we developed this, we didn't know that we had lights. So now we have lights. So, but we do have it being there. Great. So we can move on from this. Great. Thank you very much for the conversation. We'll take it back to policy. And now we have policy JLCLJ, right? Did I say that right? And that is.
I have a little tiny amendment to it. Do you want me to make a motion for it?
So let's make a motion. Where is it? Why am I not seeing it? Oh, this is the fee schedule. Sorry. Hold on one second. Hold on, hold on. Sorry. Okay. So let's make a motion to, for first read.
Can I make the motion with an amendment?
Sure.
Sure. I motion to accept the first reading of policy JLCLJ, concussions and head injuries. This is the one labeled new proposed policy with the following amendment. In the second paragraph, replace section A with section roman numeral one. And in that same paragraph, section B, replace section B with section roman numeral two. That's my motion.
And.
I don't know if you can buy that.
By Beth and seconded by Krista. Got it. Okay. So Beth gets, she and her team have worked all, really hard on this and done a great job with this.
But I couldn't get that one right with the roman numeral. So I apologize for that, but we'll get that fixed.
So first, if you're looking at the packet, it's a little different than our usual method where we give you like a marked up version. The marked up version's there, right? You're going to go over all that?
Yeah, sure. I can go over that. Just to kind of, exactly on that, that's actually the very first point. I made a note to explain. We do have three versions in there, which is not a normal approach. The one that I made the motion for is that very first one, the proposed one. We included the current one and a combined version just because there's so many changes to the proposed one or to make it, you know, it's almost a brand new policy. So we provided that so that everybody had what version made sense to them. For me personally, it makes sense to look at the old one and to look at the new one. But it also, some people, your brain works on seeing the separation. So they're all in there, but the one that we're talking about and proposing is the first one. To continue on, just to give a little bit of history real quick, this, this policy, the initial one in there was, was born here about nine years ago and hasn't had any updates since. Since then, there's been new understanding in neurosciences. There's been changes. There's a new RSA and there's been updates by the New Hampshire School Board Association. Just on a little side note, just as things always go, the RSA that came to be back in September that prompts this change basically dictates two things. One, that the DOE will work on a pop, like a procedure and give information, kind of push that to the school districts. And two, that school boards have to have policy in place. The DOE hasn't provided all that stuff yet. But it doesn't excuse us from not having a policy in place. So we are, you know, there's a potential that we might have some tweaks once they get that information out. It's expected soon in 2021 is what I've been told, 2021 sometime soon, but we don't have that yet. I knew, I know more stuff came out today. I couldn't actually open it. So I don't know if it's in there at all, but I don't think the DOE has done that. So the big reasons why we had to change, the obvious ones, catch up with science and the law to be compliant. We wanted to better recognize that concussions happen outside of sports. We need to support much better adequate return to learn. That's something the initial one was really lacking was the return to learn. And we want to also make sure that return to participation play happens safely and spelt out a little bit more. Who's been working on this besides the policy committee? We've kind of almost had a subcommittee. Both our principals, Rick and Tim, have helped look over this probably more times than they want to, want to admit with all their changes. Athletic administrators have been sitting down with us, athletic trainer Mike Thompson, all three of our school nurses, Kelly, Amber and Sheila. So both middle school and high school. And also high school guidance has had a look at this and given feedback. So we feel like this new policy has really had really good perspectives from both the high school and the middle school. And it's, it's really been an awesome crew to work with to get this done. I guess just the last part's the clear highlight, the big changes are, we have definitions now to define head injury, healthcare providers, student, athlete, sports, things like that. It really is a total overhaul for our return to learn. And one that's been supported by these groups that have looked over it. Return to participation versus play, that was talked about a lot, is just return to play sometimes implies you have a head concussion and return to play, you're back out full, you know, participation in a football game. And that's not what this is. So it's a return to participation, a graduated reentry was the goal. Thoughtful language went into this to make sure our athletic directors and our athletic director and athletic trainer have the privilege to say when something's not safe and to remove students from play if needed. And probably one of the ones that was most dear to me is that there's the duty to report. And probably one of the ones that was most dear to me is that there's the duty to report was made very clear to include following our, our guidelines with, you know, policy EBBB, I think that's enough Bs, to report it, um, on a form that actually, you know, is shareable, that there's, um, a shared information. I think that was the only, the big feedback from everybody is, you know, if an injury happens, sometimes the nurse knows, but athletics doesn't or sometimes guidance knows, but, you know, the nurse does, or different things like that. So this, um, the duty to report was made really clear, um, so that helps to communicate and increase communication. And I think just, you know, next, like looking ahead at what's next is, you know, if the board's good with this, if they need changes, I can answer questions. But we are kind of tweaking the procedures and that is separate from this, so we're not going to go over that tonight. But we have some really pretty solid procedures in place, but they do need tailoring. And at this point, it really seems like the procedures that have been covering the high school may be able to cover both the middle school and high school. So we're going to work on that, but at this point, I think the policy's in a really good spot that could move forward. So, but if there's questions, I can help you answer questions.
Thanks, Beth.
No problem.
Great. Any questions from the non-policy members?
Yes, sir.
I noticed in the, and I'm, I'm using the third one, which is the merged one, just so I can understand it, but...
Sure, absolutely.
In the duty to report...
Mm-hmm. Get where you are.
About halfway through, it says teachers should report to the school nurse or administrator. The word should to me is not as strong.
Okay.
And I might suggest that you go through the policy as a whole and search for the word should and perhaps change it to must or will, you know, something that doesn't sound discretionary. Does this policy in any way dictate the need for, uh, baseline testing that we do? Or is that elsewhere? Or is that part of our...
That's in our procedures, um, that's in our procedures. I'm not sure that there is any, like in terms of, like I've reviewed all the RSAs and, and just being in practice and all myself. That's something, um, that's part of the medical clearance, but that's in procedure. And, and it is mentioned in policy that in order to even return, they need clearance from a medical provider. But we don't dictate exactly, and I don't think that, I'm not sure that we have the right to dictate.
Do we require baseline testing?
We offer it, but I don't think we can require it.
I think it's in...
I don't think we can mandate.
I don't, I, I mean, it's offered to all of our athletes, but I say offered, but I'm not sure. I mean, our athletes, I thought made a physical end baseline. I thought that they did.
Maybe I, maybe I misspeaked. I don't recall tonight, but we...
I think I, I misspoke. We do require it of the athletes. We can't mandate it for non-athletes.
Is it every one, minimum every two years? It's definitely a part of what you have to do in order to be an athlete.
So I'm just wondering, does, does this policy in any way, um, instruct people to reference that? Or is it just assumed they know to do that?
You know, I guess that's a good question, but we've put a lot in place in this policy specifically that, um, they have to, it's part of the return to participate, you're going through the athletic director. And that is in procedures very clearly how they move through those. So it's, impact testing is mentioned in the procedures as, as something that can be used.
The only thing I'm wondering is if we have this data, it would be a shame if it didn't get, um, given to the right person so that they can make that, that assessment.
Just so you know, the data from the test goes to Mike, athletic trainer. And when you get a concussion, um...
Is he definitely in the loop?
He's always, and he's actually...
To refer return?
He's always in the loop and again, you know, it's, it's not in the policy, but part of what we've really discussed quite a bit at length to put in the procedure is kind of signature checkpoint. So they need, we know they need a, like it's law, you have to have a, a written signature from a healthcare provider and you need a written permission from a parent. That is non-negotiable. But we have talked about requiring signatures from, you know, uh, an administrator on a campus level and athletic trainer or director. We've been playing around with who's the most appropriate because that ensures those steps are happening because they are in procedure.
I'm just wondering if you've got, if you've got the people who have to sign off and the medical professionals, should there be something that says that, that we, the school district, is required to provide that baseline data if available to those medical providers?
I've never had an issue. I, but that's, it's a good question, but we, it can be provided. You can access it through impact testing, so...
The other thing is typically when there's a concussion, again, our athletic trainer is going to be involved with both the parents and in many cases, the, um, child's healthcare professional.
And it says, in order for them to come back to play, they, unsuccessful completion of the graduated return to play procedures under the direction of the athletic trainer is required before full return to play is permitted. So the last person, so you can get, you'll, you go and you get your medical provider. What? This is the return to play.
But that's what I was going to mention just now. That's exactly, you know, this, this is more, your question's way more applicable to athletes. But in, in all honesty, in the number of concussions and, and the return procedures I see here and covering as the nurses up here, a lot of them are not school-related and they don't happen at school.
But we don't have, for non-athletes, we don't have the impact testing.
No.
If we do have the data, but it's non-athletics related, if, if coming back, my concern is we've got this great information. We collected on a lot of kids because we have so many kids who play. But we've got kids who may get injured elsewhere. Is there something to trigger us to say, hey, this, this isn't a thing about playing sports, but we've got the data.
But I'd hate to put something that specific in policy because I think things are constantly changing and the tools we use to evaluate. Right now, impact testing is widely used and accepted, but I don't know of a case like where, if I'm a parent, I have a, a high school athlete who has had impact testing. If she has, you know, concussion and I want access to that, I don't know that I'd have any problems getting the athletic trainer to provide access. It's like any other record.
Yes.
So it's only...
I'm just saying it's like any other record.
I'm just picking up, Beth, on what you said is that one of the goals here was to make it extend beyond just the scope of athletics.
Yes.
And it sounds like we've got a great procedure for our student athletes. I'm, I'm just thinking, and this is only first reading, but I'm just, I'm just trying to just, can, can we make those resources more generally applicable to an injury that occurs under any circumstance?
So like you kind of want in the return to learning protocols, a statement like if...
So until the return to play.
If, if there's, um, if there's, if there's anything available, even in the athletic department or, you know, like something like that.
I, I'm not opposed to that, but who would be, who would be the ones saying, oh, Johnny has a concussion and Johnny's not an athlete? And what kind of data do we have that's applicable? That's my only, that's my only consideration.
Whoever signing off on the return to academics would have the...
But the problem is the, in, in order to return to academics, you already need a healthcare provider and a parent's signature first. So it's, it's in that order. So in order, and I, I think that's a good checkpoint, is the, the building administrator could be a signature. But unfortunately, by the time it gets to that person, you're already expected to have seen a healthcare provider. So I don't think that checkpoint would work, although it's a good idea. I don't know.
So maybe we can noodle through it in policy a little bit and see if there's a way to do that. You, we'll have your comments in a minute and we'll bring them, we bring the minutes to the policy meeting, so we have a way to do that, so.
No, sounds good. Thank you.
Any other comments on this? Okay, all in favor, first read? Five zero, great.
Thank you. What's next? Non-public, anything else? Non-public.
Okay, so, um, we did highlights of the co-op. I need a report out from the process server.
Time went really well. Uh, we added some extra things in. We got thorough, thorough conversation on, uh, on many topics, including some that might have not have been anticipated. And we still are only 10 minutes off from schedule, so we've all done all. I hope people feel it was productive.
It was productive.
It was like a elementary school meeting right now.
We, we can see it for improvement though. Okay. So I need a motion, um, that the board go, I need a motion that the board by roll call go into non-public session pursuant to RSA 91- dash A, semicolon three.
That's a full colon.
Is that a full colon? Sorry. Colon three, two, A, the dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee. Is that where we're at?
Or C, reputation.
Or is it C, reputation? Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. I need a roll call. Krista?
Krista, aye.
Holly, aye.
Tom, aye.
Kate, aye.
Beth, aye.
So we are in non-public at eight PM, exactly.